Good evening, everyone. The council meeting November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two is called the order. Do a pledge of allegiance. Donna, will you do a roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Boden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Yep.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes for the agenda? City manager, do you have any late changes?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to recommend to the council that on the action agenda item G one, it's the rotating art gallery that we moved that item to item number G six last on the agenda. And that would be the only change I would recommend this evening.
Thank you. That'll be with the council. All right. To council members, have any board reports to share? None? Has everyone reviewed the items in the consent agenda? Right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have any discussion, I guess there's discussion. We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two presentations this evening. Liz Arbald is here to give us Mason County Historical Society Museum's third quarter report.
Hello. First of all, I'd like to say I'd like to apologize for my schedule mixed up the last time, but but I'm here now with the third quarter. There we go. So we had a pretty good third quarter. We had about nine hundred visitors to the museum. We had a little bump in July that was from the the Chamber Expo. We had about a hundred extra people come in that day, which was great. We had a total of two hundred and eighty-eight visitors who were from distances of greater than fifty miles, and of those, a hundred and two were from either out of state or international. It's really fun. You know, we get people who are just curious about why Shelton is here, you know, it's like it seems like it's out in the middle of nowhere. And in fact, I had a visitor from Belgium and he was looking through one of our exhibits and he wanted to know what a esteemed donkey was. And I just never thought that would be part of my job description, describing a steam donkey to someone from Antwerp. So our website has been updated. It's been about six, eight months ago, but we're getting pretty good traffic with that. We have over eleven hundred unique users for the third quarter, sixteen hundred in online sales, which includes memberships, local history books, and then also donations. But all of that was a hundred and thirty-seven percent higher than the previous quarter, which is great. We had we had about eight hundred engagements with the last three Facebook posts of September. And we have about thirty-three hundred follow, not followers, but thirty-three hundred people like our Facebook page. So now if we could just get all of those people off their computers to come into the museum, we would be happy. We had a reception for photographer John Tilezak for his exhibit Chasing Ghosts. There were I was out of town, but there were between twenty-five and thirty people for that and including the president of the Ballard Historical Society and the executive director from the Paulson Museum in Hookview. So we're always happy when we can bring new people in. We're putting the final touches on our next exhibit, which is the Impressions of Hood Canal, which features the art of the Dolby family, primarily Ethel, who came to Union in nineteen eleven after she married and had, I think, three or four children. So included in the exhibit will be the work of her son, who is the painter Fritz Dolby, her granddaughter Valerie Johnson, and then other artists from that area in that period. So Waldo Chase. We probably won't be putting any Ori Nobles in it, but then we also have a couple of paintings by an artist named Edgar Forkner, who also has art at the Art Institute of Chicago and the Seattle Art Museum and now the Mason County Historical Museum. Seventeen of these paintings were the gift of Charles Johnson, who was Valerie Johnson's husband. The Historical Society Car Show will be back the last Sunday in June. This has been our primary fundraiser for nineteen years, so pre-pandemic, of course. So we're looking forward to having it back again. It's going to be a joint venture with the Salish Sea Rotary Club of Mason County. And I think they're going to bring a lot of energy and new ideas. So I think it's going to be a really great partnership. And so I just want to thank you all again for your continued support of the museum. And are there any questions?
I don't know what a steam donkey is.
Yeah, yeah, he actually was not supposed to be in there, but you know, that's the way it goes.
Any question? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Next, we have an LTAC report from Rich Hansen.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. Mine are kind of a strange thing to even report on. I'm reporting on the large murals up on the top of the hill as you're coming into Shelton, an outlook park. Right now currently is Santa Claus and it's a rotation. The Santa Claus first went up in two thousand and eighteen or two thousand and yeah, two thousand and eighteen, sorry. And he is a reproduction of the Beauchamp Santa Claus, which was in downtown Shelton in the nineteen sixties. It's currently, the original is at Hunter's Farm. So if anybody wants to go see him, he's there. And we did an exact reproduction of him in two thousand and eighteen. Originally, we put it in toshers and then thanks to the city, we now have a permanent location for him up on the hill. And since we have an engineered location for large murals and it looks kind of sad when there's nobody up there. We had suggestions to put a Paul Bunyan up. So we did a Paul Bunyan. And then during COVID, that was actually during COVID too, but then we thought Oyster Fest needed something. And then this year, we also have a giant double bass, which doesn't have any males, white males on it at all. It's just a large instrument. So they're all funded through private donations and with the support of the city on putting them up. And I hope everybody enjoys them. They're thirty-two feet tall. They are historical representations of whatever we could find that would represent these different events. So the Oyster Fest man is part of the logo from the very beginning. And then obviously Paul Bunyan kind of goes without saying. And then the double bass is just because bluegrass and he looks good there. And so thank you for your support. From a number side of things, in two thousand and twenty-one, even though we were during COVID, we had quite a market increase in lodging tax revenues for the city. I think it was about twenty percent. And then this year already, we're up twenty percent. So I think having the events and I don't really think the murals bring people to town to stay, honestly, but by helping to market the events, we are bringing more people. And it is very gratifying when people actually take their time to get out of their car and get their picture taken with it, put it on Facebook and tag me. That makes me feel happy. So thank you, everybody, for your support. And I appreciate the fact that we get to put some art up.
Questions or comments? Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, and a steam donkey is for pulling the logs out of the wood.
Okay.
Yeah, replace the, yeah, replace the oxen.
Right. We are now at a general public comment. At this time, members of the public are invited to make public comments on any topic that's not listed on the agenda. Donna, do we have anyone interested in public comment tonight?
We do. Mr. Mayor, first is Dean Jewitt.
Evening. Appreciate being able to be here. I'm going to give you a shotgun approach and have a lot of topics to cover in a short amount of time. I first, so apparently there's going to be a parade about not being a number. I'm not sure if you guys are aware of this or not. It's going to be right through town, right in the middle of, you know, rush hour. I understand that, you know, permits are given, so they're given. Question I have is this, this group, Crossroads Housing, Community Lifeline, has come to you for funding. Okay. I, you guys are all aware of the hearing examiner and the and the and the decision that they had back in June or July, June thirteenth. Terrace McCarthy said that Shelton-based nonprofit can apply again for an addendum to the conditional use permit once they reduce their negative impact on their neighbors and the surrounding area. Increasing the beds from thirty-five to fifty would be like adding gasoline to a fire. So this is an individual that was hired by the city to take a look at facts and make a determination based on those facts. So I'm not sure what they're requesting the funding for until that negative impact can be either mitigated or possibly moved out of the downtown area. You also heard from the Health Department on that three to four to five block radius that's affected by that. Right now, as we speak, there's two camps in Brewer Park and there's two camps in Post Office Park. One camp at Post Office Park has been there for five days. I've called it in and reported on the app numerous times. So I do want to thank Sergeant Lawson for probably doing some follow-up with Chief Beeson on an email that I had sent and explained some what they call stale misdemeanors when we're talking about trespassing. So I appreciate that. I do have a request for you guys that maybe you could put a request out to the chief on getting some information to the business owners and the business people in the downtown sector to, what can we do? What options do we have to mitigate that negative impact? Okay, it's not just one group that should have all the focus. We need some focus on what we need to do for some positive steps as well. I have to trespass or move along a dozen people from my property on a weekly basis. And the majority of those people that I talk to are not from Shelton. Okay, that's, I mean, that's a fact. They're clearing stuff in Olympia and they're coming here. We have an influx of RVs, which you guys already understand and you already know that. We, you know, when these campers come in, if they set up in one place, then they're moved to another place. Okay? That doesn't matter. They're still in our community and they need to be dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Anyone else have a public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Athena Ayers.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for allowing me to be here today. I appreciate the opportunity to address city council and address our community. My concern this evening is, as I'm sure everyone is aware, the temperatures are well below freezing and have been over the last week. They will continue to be that way over the next week. Community Lifeline is currently able to house temporarily thirty-five people at a time. And by our own community's data, we have hundreds of people who are currently sleeping on the street experiencing these weather conditions. And so I come to you asking that we can hopefully collaborate together to come up with some kind of an emergency response plan for when temperatures get this way on an ongoing basis, not just, you know, last year we had temperatures that were nine degrees and feet of snow and and we worked really well, the city with Community Lifeline and Crazy Love Ministries to address that in the moment, but it would just be, I think, more successful if we could have something put together ahead of time so that when these things happen, we can respond to them in an organized way and more of an efficient way. I know we're having to turn people away every evening and it's absolutely devastating to do. The risk factors involved in being outside, sleeping overnight in twenty-degree weather, twenty-five-degree weather is, as you can imagine, excruciating. People are experiencing severe health concerns, if not the risk of dying on the streets this way. And so I just really hope that as we move together and we're working to address this issue, we can plan for for those types of things. Thank you.
Donna, anyone else sign up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor, we do not.
All right. Communication Specialist Mary Ricker has information for us about community calendar and all this thing.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. I'm Communication Specialist Mary Ricker, and I'm here this evening to discuss a potential new community calendar policy. We've identified a need for a community events calendar for residents, visitors, and businesses to be able to access curated community event information in one place. We regularly receive phone calls from individuals looking for all kinds of event information. And we field requests from event organizers for assistance with informing the public about what is going on around town. The proposed community calendar would be hosted on the city's new website, which I'm going to knock on wood as I say this, should hopefully launch before the end of the year. Otherwise, my hair might all fall out of my head, but hopefully before the end of the year. The proposed policy in your packets is more specific information about how the submission process would work and the different proposed criteria for event submissions. And just similar community calendars are used in municipalities, including Pauls Bow, Everett, Lynnwood, Arlington, Auburn, and Bonnie Lake. So this has been a successful thing to have in a lot of different municipalities. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Who at the city is the primary point of contact for managing calendar?
I think it would be me. Jeff could chime in. Jeff is my boss.
He wants to get something on the calendar, call Mary.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll have a direct link on how to do that as well. It is part of the, it'll have the policy and everything and all the instructions on how to do that, very similar to our reader boards that we use for for other community events to advertise those when we're not using them for major construction projects.
I saw another city had a calendar and they were actually also advertising food truck areas that obviously for profit, but if they were listing that we have a food truck zone here, I think that'd be a good idea to maybe point out our restaurants in town too. And you know, when you come to town, there you go.
Yeah, I think that there's an opportunity there to collaborate with other community groups, including the Downtown Merch Association and the Chamber of Commerce to do something like that. Absolutely.
Right. Questions or comments?
Would, would the clubs like Rotary and Quanis and all those, would those be on the calendar?
I believe if those groups had an event that would fit the criteria, I mean, I believe so. It's pretty detailed, the like list of things that a potential event would need to satisfy one of. And I believe that that would work, but obviously.
Yeah, downtown, this is targeted at nonprofit partners, community events, those types of things.
All right. So if you guys have an event, could submit it.
Okay.
I kind of went out of script here. So, but we have any public comment, Donna?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move to forward the proposed community calendar policy to the action agenda for December sixth, council meeting. Go for the consideration.
Now we're at comments or questions? We take it we have none. We have a motion in a second to forward the proposed community calendar policy to the action agenda for December sixth, council meeting for the consideration. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're recessing from a regular meeting to open a public hearing. Parks and Facility Director Mark Ziegler has information for us about parks and open spaces area requirements for residential subdivisions.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Time to bring to you amendments to Shelton Municipal Code to hopefully clarify some of our parks and recreation standards, particularly with the development of subdivisions in the community. We have most recently had some renewed interest in developing residential subdivisions in this community. And we've recognized that some of our, some of our standards are a little bit vague. And in dealing with some of the developers and the representatives, we hope to clarify these standards. So in the future, when they're working with the city, they know exactly what to present to us. It streamlines our process. It gives them certainty in moving forward. These are required through CIPA, the State Environmental Policy Act, much like traffic and utilities, sewer, water. Parks are required to be addressed for the impacts of those, these subdivisions might, you know, incur on the, on the city of Shelton, much like schools are too. And it's right now, I believe the Shelton schools should work through a capital facilities plan to help identify how how those future impacts and the growth that would come from these subdivisions would impact the schools. And we're doing the same thing with parks now. And this really stems from the adoption of our Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan and the, and the details and the standards that were, that were adopted by the council back in two thousand and nineteen. The council adopted a five acre per thousand standard as recommended from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and the Parks Recreation, Open Space and Trails Plan. And so this new language basically codifies that within the standards that a neighborhood park would be required. So it provides more certainty, which is the five acre per thousand. How that is calculated, you might ask. We take a subdivision that might be a hundred houses and we utilize the census's, the US Census data for average household. So if it's two point seven six residents per household times a hundred houses gives us a population for that subdivision. Do a quick math, five acres per thousand will determine how many acres are required for that subdivision and then what kind of amenities are required. Typically, our neighborhood parks are a totlot or playground structure, some type of sport court, grass playfield area, some picnic facilities that is scaled to that, to that subdivision or to that area that it would serve. It's not a community facility like Neyland Park is that serves a greater community. If the subdivision is required to have acreage over two acres, then within the standard, they are allowed to create passive recreation areas. So that might be less formal facilities, trails, benches, connecting points, more open spacers and things like that within, within the subdivision itself. We believe this provides, again, greater certainty for our development community moving forward as well as staff and working with that development community. This is first briefing you've had on this. We are currently under review with the Washington State Department of Commerce, which is required for amendments to our municipal code. And so most likely, we won't have comments back from them until sometime in December. So we'd, staff would be bringing this back to you in January with your approval tonight to to move forward to the consent agenda at that time. One other thing, this is kind of a follow-up from the study session from January twenty-sixth, if you remember the discussion there about communities' needs per our Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan. And this specifically addresses neighborhood parks as a real adds to future development, future residential population growth within the city. These standards don't address some of the community facilities that are listed within our capital facilities plan in our Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan, like Eagle Point Trail, the redevelopment of a skate park, replacement of skate park, the Simpson Railroad Trail development in the future. So those are, those are going to be projects that future resources will be needed to be addressed and address those projects in it as we move forward in the coming years. So if you have any questions, I'm available at any time.
Anyone sign up for public comment, Donna?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we have a reading ordinance number one nine nine four dash zero nine two two.
Ordinance number one nine nine four dash zero nine two two. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending sections one nine point one six point zero four zero and one nine point two seven point zero one zero of the Shelton Municipal Code relating to park and open space area requirements for residential subdivisions.
Do we have a motion?
Move that we forward ordinance number one nine nine four dash zero nine two two to the December sixth action agenda for further consideration.
May I offer my point of information? If we won't have comments back from Department of Commerce by then, do we need to push that back to January? January date certain, so I would I move for an amendment that the date for consideration be January third based on that information.
Is that an amendment acceptable?
We need a second.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. So now comments or questions?
I have one comment. It's always, probably getting tired of the same comment all the time, Mark, but I think Shelton is doing an awesome job on our having parks and trails and open spaces for people to enjoy. So thank you very much.
So we need to vote on the amendment first.
Need to vote on the amendment first and then go back and vote on the original motion, but the original motion still does need a second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to forward ordinance number one nine nine four dash zero nine two two to the January third action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember Sherman seconded Deidre's amendment. So vote on that now.
All right, so.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
All in favor? Oppose? That motion amendment carries.
Yes.
Now back to the main motion.
So we have a motion and a second to forward ordinance number one nine nine four dash zero nine two two to December sixth action agenda for the consideration.
All in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You guys sold me off track. The other hearing is closed for another public hearing. Community Economic Development Director Jay Hill, information about updating our municipal code.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Before you is a proposed ordinance which seeks to amend Title Eight of the municipal code, which is related to public nuisances. This nuisance would, or sorry, this ordinance would make listed nuisances punishable by a civil infraction instead of a misdemeanor. Our code enforcement officers are not able to issue misdemeanors. And in order to do that, that's required that they would, you know, work with the police department and the prosecutor to do so. And so by making some of our nuisances, the ones specifically listed within this section of Title Eight as infractions instead of misdemeanors, our code enforcement officers are able to issue and more proactively prosecute for those kinds of items. Fireworks, illegal camping, and other offenses remain misdemeanors elsewhere in Title Eight. So those are not being changed. Those will continue to seem misdemeanors. And those can be handled by the police department. There's some other cleanup that happened while we were poking around under the hood on on Title Eight. There was a provision for a health officer, which dates back to nineteen twenty-one, which we don't have a health officer. And there's a whole bunch of RCW and back restrictions on what a health officer is, and they have to be a licensed doctor and all kinds of stuff. So we were like, well, let's yank that out. And also there was duplicate entries for dead animals as an offense, like you could be cited under two different sections. We just streamlined that into one. And then we specifically assigned the code enforcement duties to the Community and Economic Development Department. As you, I hope remember that position or that function, there's two positions, that function was just moved from the police department back to Community and Economic Development. We're beginning to start our more proactive kind of enforcement program. And this is part of that and being able to hold people accountable for it and being able to accelerate the infractions through. You will note that in the ordinance, there's, there's a first offense infraction, a second offense infraction, and then a misdemeanor if somebody still has not complied. We didn't want to go straight to misdemeanor, but we still needed, I think, some sort of weightier penalty for for people who didn't want to comply. And that concludes my comments and happy to answer any questions.
All right. Donna, has anyone signed up for public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have a reading of ordinance number one nine nine five dash zero one two two.
Ordinance number one nine nine five dash one zero two two. An ordinance of the city of Shelton, Washington, amending Title Eight of the Shelton Municipal Code related to public nuisances.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move to forward ordinance number one nine nine five dash one zero two two to the December sixth action agenda for further consideration.
Right. Comments or questions? Second. Second. Comments or questions?
So fireworks. That's a nuisance. You say you do, you come to them and give them a warning, I guess, is what it is.
Fireworks is a nuisance, but Fireworks is a nuisance, but that remains a misdemeanor enforceable by the police department, that wouldn't be a code enforcement issue.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So we talked about fireworks and camping also remaining as a misdemeanor, but I see that item sixteen. Has camping or encampments, can you draw the distinction there between the public nuisance and the misdemeanor?
Correct, thank you for asking, actually, I could have talked about this. So the encampment itself, the it further describes it as as the junk and waste and whatnot that's that's left there. That the the leaving of the kind of the litter kind of parts of that go along with some of these encampments. Would still be an infraction. The camping, as per the other provisions of Title Eight, would remain a misdemeanor, so it's it's possible that it's it's. Kind of one, one action, but two separately cited offenses.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? We have a motion to second to forward ordinance number one nine nine five dash zero one two two to December sixth. One zero, what? Did I say that? Or this number, we have a motion to second to forward ordinance number one nine nine five one zero two two to the December sixth. Twenty twenty two action agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye. I don't know why I'm missing a number today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Police Chief Carol Beeson has information for us about GL contract for the Squali Tribe.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and members of council, I'm very excited to be here tonight to talk about this contract I've been working on with the Nisqually Corrections Facility. As you all know, we currently have a contract with Mason County Sheriff's Office. Where the city pays for seven guaranteed beds. These beds are broken up into two categories, the first five are for. Inmates that have committed only municipal code violations, the other two are called any beds. And in theory, we could put anybody that we arrest in those two beds. In the time that I've been here, we've been presented with a great deal of challenge when it comes to utilizing the beds that we pay for. Some of it is related to staffing issues with the jail, some of it has to do with some. Confines of the facility itself, among other things. But we find it hard to actually get. Folks booked into jail on a regular basis and many times those beds remain empty. In an effort to try to keep this community safer and hold some of our offenders more accountable for their actions. We started looking to see if we could come up with another way that we could. Put people in jail when they have multiple offenses. Or if there's a need for public safety to put them in jail. So I've been working with Nisqually on a what they call a per diem contract. It what makes it different than the one we have with Mason County is that we would not have any guaranteed beds. We would pay per inmate when we take them there and we would pay every day as long as they were in their in their custody. So it would alleviate a set. Price for the beds that we pay in Mason County. That rate for us would be a hundred and thirty dollars a day as a set rate. They have the ability there to do the video. Hearings, so we'd still be able to have our hearings here with the inmates being there. And I think in the long run, this is going to be very helpful for us. It would likely. Have a higher cost in the beginning because we have a lot of folks that are running around with. A bunch of warrants that we're now going to be able to put into jail and have them held accountable. Some of the things that I've seen recently that. In my mind, make this is a necessity for us. The courts have been telling me that they have people that are on their calendar that aren't coming in. Because they know that the judge will issue a warrant for their arrest, but. Because of the booking restrictions and the staffing issues at Mason County Jail. They know even if they have a warrant that we aren't going to be able to put them in jail, so. I think being able to hold people accountable and put them in jail when they have warrants will help us. Achieve your strategy to make Shelton a safer place. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the contract that you may have.
Donna, do we have any public comment?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
When the audience want to comment on this subject? All right. We have a motion.
I moved forward in a Squali Correctional Facility contract, the action agenda for the December sixth meeting for further consideration.
Second. Okay, comments or questions?
Is there a minimum amount of days that they can give?
No.
Deputy Mayor. Chief, thank you very much for the work on this. You know the challenge better than any of us. This is this is some relief on this front. So then what's the plan with the Mason County Jail, we're spending twenty thousand dollars a month, is that, do we shut that off then, once this is done or?
Yes, as soon as we actually have the contract with Nisqually in place. I've already been working to amend the contract that we have with the jail and it will be a similar per diem contract. Some of the differences, if we have mandatory arrests, so anybody that's a been arrested for domestic violence. DUI or AMV felonies, those are all considered mandatory arrests, we'll still be able to put those into Mason County Jail. This would be more effective affecting our discretionary arrest. But our contract with them will be a very similar per diem contract. That way, we only pay for people when they're actually in jail.
And A and B felonies are?
A and B felonies would be any violent crimes against people, rape, robbery, homicide. Assault with serious injuries. Any child abuse cases with serious injuries, those kind of crimes would be your A and B felonies. Your C felonies are generally property crimes, burglaries. Or any kind of vandalism that has a high dollar amount attached to. Our examples.
Thank you for working on this, how many months have you been working on this contract?
Oh, my gosh, probably about six months in total, trying to get all the language done and going back and forth between. The legal on our side, legal on their side, I'm just really happy that we're getting to a point where both sides are ready to sign.
I know that sounds like a long time, but that's actually record time to get something that's through, so good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the hard work, so we can actually start putting some people accountable. Any other questions or comments?
This isn't stopping. Looking for other solutions, though, is it?
Not at all, matter of fact, we see this more as a short term. Hold people accountable, to be perfectly honest with you, what we need for a long term solution is a new jail facility here. Where we can accommodate more people. Jail isn't the answer to solving all of our problems, but we certainly need more incentive for people to change their behavior. And not having the ability to put people in jail in a timely manner certainly doesn't keep people from thinking they can get away with things in our town.
Can you, can you talk a little bit about transporting the prisoner back and forth?
Yeah, so. With our contract, we will be responsible for transporting out to Nisqually and it's about a forty minute drive. So some of the considerations my folks are going to have to take into consideration when they're looking to take someone to jail is what our staffing looks like in town. My hope is, once we're fully staffed, that will increase our minimum staffing on graveyard so that there will be three people. So there will be a little more freedom for someone to go out to Nisqually. I've also had conversations with the staff at Nisqually that there's a possibility if their staffing permits, that they will meet us halfway. Take custody of folks, I imagine halfway is going to be somewhere in Olympia. And that way, our officers will be back in Shelton much sooner. In the event, you know, discretionary arrests, if we don't have the staffing at night, they're simply not going to be able to do it. But that will be a lot more useful during the day when we have more people, that they'll be able to take those folks that have multiple warrants. And be able to put them in custody so they can be held accountable.
And and after they're if they're. Charged and convicted of a crime, we will move them to a cheaper facility at Forks still.
Potentially, I would have to write to them and say that that's what I want to do. Depending on the amount of time, it it may not be in our best interest to do that, but yes, I always have that option of writing to them and saying that I want them transferred somewhere else. And that that is in the contract as well, that as long as I do it in writing, I can move them to another facility.
As soon as we execute this contract. Game on.
That's my plan, yeah.
So what you're the the resources that are being allocated to accomplish this, which you'll talk about here in a second. Are in the twenty twenty three budget, so we may be able to do a few things immediately after. The contract is executed on December sixth. Assuming council desires to go that direction. But the bulk of it won't be able to happen because we don't have the budget authority until January one, twenty twenty three with the adoption of the budget that will be before you this evening.
I mean, this was so important to the council that we are pulling out of our reserves potentially to fund this operation, so.
I'm very grateful for that, it will definitely help us to keep people safe, that we can hold these offenders accountable for their behavior.
Right, any more comments or questions? All right, we have a motion to second to forward in a Squali Correctional Facility con- contract to the action agenda December sixth for the consideration, all in favor, say aye. Posted, motion carries. Okay, we are moving our our action item. G six to the end of, or I'm sorry, G one to G six to the end of this, so we are going to start with. We're resuscitated out of a regular meeting to open a public hearing, Finance Director Mike Giddens has information for us regarding twenty twenty three budget.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Members of Council, we're bringing to you for the second public hearing, the twenty twenty three City of Shelton Budget. We're presenting it to you and our citizens with a focus on city council's strategic goals. And to the goal of community safety, as you were just discussing with the option of the jail outsourcing as Chief Beeson just presented. That will give our police department more options to hold offenders accountable for their actions with the better jail capacity, the twenty twenty three budget. Has one time funds to support this. To this end, when you approve the but final budget, there is an amount built in that will draw from the reserve if needed. To fund expanded jail services. We don't know to what extent we might need to utilize this capacity, but knowing that community safety. Is a council goal and priority and that we will better serve our overall community, we've built it into the twenty twenty three budget. And as I said at our last hearing, we will communicate with you regularly as the year commences so that we know. And you know exactly what is happening with our spending across all parts of the budget, but in particular with regard to jail spending. We realize this one year of budget support is not a long term solution to the city's ability to fund jails services. But it is a step that city leadership feels needs to be taken. There were no other changes to the twenty twenty three budget that was presented at the first public hearing. As you can see, the budget document represents a great deal of work and projects to be undertaken in twenty twenty three, thank you.
Does anyone sign up for public testimony, Donna?
No, Mr. Mayor.
May we have a reading of ordinance number one nine nine one dash zero nine two two?
Ordinance number one nine nine one dash zero nine two two. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, adopting the budget for the calendar year twenty twenty three.
We have a motion.
Move that we adopt ordinance number one nine nine one dash zero nine two two, driven in the city's twenty twenty three budget.
Second. Right, comments or questions? Thank you, thank you for all your hard work. We have a motion in the second to adopt ordinance number one nine nine one dash zero nine two two approving the city's twenty twenty three budget, all in favor, say aye. Posted, motion carries. Right, this public hearing is closed and we're opening up another public hearing. We have another item for Director Giddens, he has information about twenty twenty three regular ad valorem taxes.
Thank you again, as part of the budget based system of property taxation in our state, the city has determined the amount needed to partially fund the budget. And we present you with the property tax levy this evening, the ad valorem tax ordinance confirms the city's partial reliance on property taxes. As a general. Revenue funding source, this is the total amount to be collected from property owners within the city limits.
All right, anyone sent up a public comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Maybe we have a reading of ordinance one nine nine two dash zero nine two two.
Ordinance number one nine nine two dash zero nine two two. An ordinance of the City of Shelton, Washington, setting the amount of the annual ad valorem taxes in the City of Shelton for calendar year twenty twenty three.
And do we have a motion?
I move that we approve ordinance number one nine nine two dash zero nine two two as presented.
Second. All right, comments or questions?
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, this includes the regular property tax levy as well as the emergency medical services property tax levy.
Thank you. No comments, all right, we have a motion to second to approve ordinance number one nine nine two dash zero nine two two as presented, all in favor, say aye. I posted, motion carries. The public hearing is closed and we are back to our regular meeting. Public Works Administrative Manager Brooke Hilt has information for us about instruction contract award for the seed street landfill cleanup.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. At the last meeting on the business agenda, I had some preliminary information that I provided to you regarding the bid opening. It wasn't in your packet at the time, but I have since updated packet information with the information with. Award or the recommendation of award for Brumfield Construction. I've also increased the formation for the regarding the budget. And outlined the activities that will occur for the five years post construction as required for the agreed order. And that that's the only information that's been changed.
Right, Donna, has anyone sent up a comment?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, maybe we have a reading of resolution one two four six dash one zero two two.
Resolution number one two four six dash one zero two two. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Shelton, Washington. Authorizing the city manager to execute a public works contract with Brumfield Construction Incorporated. For completion of the C Street landfill cleanup construction project.
And do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution number one two four six dash one zero two two as presented.
Second. All right, commerce or questions? Thanks, thank you very much for all that hard work, I know you kind of inherited that, didn't you? We have a motion to second to approve resolution one two four six dash one zero two two as presented, all in favor, say aye. Posted, motion carries. Our last action item is resolution declaring an emergency for RAS pump at the wastewater treatment plant, Superintendent Brent Armstrong has details for us.
Evening, Mayor and councilman. This is a emergency purchase of a. RAS pump at the main wastewater treatment plant, we are heading in to the rainy season. And we have. Since lost our second RAS pump, we've. We've gone out to bid, but there was a seventy day lead time. On the pump. Right as soon as that closed, our second pump failed. And. I'm, we. Going into the rainy season, we don't need to. Try and limp through. With the possibility of a violation, so. We have found a. Same. Spect pump that we can get in three weeks, we ordered it on the third. And it is scheduled to be here the twenty fourth, we need to. Have it deemed an emergency, so because we can waive the purchasing. Guidelines.
All right, Donna, anyone sent up a public comment?
No, we don't.
Maybe we're reading a resolution one two four eight dash one one two two.
Resolution number one two four eight dash one one two two. A resolus- a resolution of the City of Shelton, Washington, declaring an emergency related to the failure of return activated sludge. RAS pumps at the main wastewater treatment plant and waiving formal competitive bidding.
Thank you, Donna, do we have a motion?
And move to adopt resolution number one two four eight dash one one two two as presented.
Comments or questions?
What is a RAS pump?
It is a return activated sludge pump that actually returns the sludge that settles in our clarifiers back up to the beginning of the plant.
It, is a, is something that we should have one on shelf at all times?
That, that is our goal to work into the budget.
Right.
And we're going to try and get an on-chill because they're redundant right now. So usually you're good. Both of them have failed. So we are going to look to have, right now, we have a portable setup, but it has to be staffed twenty-four hours of the day and it's, we're working towards getting the shelving, not just with this pump, with multiple other pumps also.
Yeah, UV lights and everything.
Oh, yeah. Those are redundant.
Yeah. All right. We have a, anybody else have any questions? Sorry. We have a motion, the second to adopt resolution one two four eight dash one one two two as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Now we are doing G one, it's now G six. Mark Ziegler has details for, for us for about the Civic Center rotating art gallery.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, again. Council members, I'm pleased to bring you recommendations from the Shelton Arts Commission's jury review process for the Civic Center rotating art gallery. On October twenty-eighth, the the Arts Commission advertised for submittals to the rotating art gallery. We had five artists submit. And tonight I bring you the recommendation of three different artists with twelve total pieces that would be installed with your approval on November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-two, and they would be in place through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
All right. Is there any public comment, Donna?
No, we don't, Mr. Mayor.
And do we have a motion?
I move to approve the Shelton Arts Commission's recommendations for placement in the Civic Center rotating art gallery.
Second. Comments or questions? Thank you, Mark. We have a motion, the second to approve the Shelton Arts Commission recommendations for placement in the Civic Center rotating art gallery. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. All right. Jeff, it's your turn. City manager report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to mention a couple of things for this evening. First, we are doing our winter road prep. I'm sure everybody that's woken up in the last week or so has realized that it's below freezing. I know I have. So we want to get that done before the precipitation starts to fall. And just wanted to let you know that we're working on that and making sure that's done. Next thing I wanted to mention, we have a bunch of events coming up, as I'm sure you know, the Christmas lights went up over last couple of days. They were doing it this morning when I was on my way in and they were lit up tonight when I was on my way back. So it looks really good. It looks great as a celebration of the holidays for our community. Toys for Tots will take play, actually Shop With A Cop is first, will take place on December third at nine AM. And I wanted to let you know about that. And then the Toys For Tots Drive, our own Shelton Police Department will be competing with Mason County Sheriff's Office to see how many toys we can gather for the community. And I know our police chief has bought a plug-in pump for her car and she's got all kinds of decorations and she's going to try to attract all the folks to come drop things off in our basket. So that's, that's a good thing. That'll be fun. Last thing I wanted to mention was our, several of our team members across various departments participated in the Shelton High School Career Fair. It was a big success. They had all the professions and all the work that we do here at the city lined out. And it's amazing to see and hear about the kids saying, wow, it takes all that to run a city. Yeah, it's, it's, it's a pretty big deal. So that was great. They had a lot of fun, too. Looking ahead, several things. Next Tuesday, we will have our study session and council will hear about the homelessness task force recommendations. That task force concluded on October eleventh and we'll be presenting those recommendations to you. And as a separate item, we will present research on no sit, no lie ordinances around the state. We picked four that are pretty representative of all the ones that are out there. And we'll go over kind of the elements of each one of those, those items and have a council discussion on that. November is a month with five Tuesdays. So we all have Tuesday, the twenty-ninth off, and I'm sure you're all very excited about that. So it's, that's a good thing and I hope you all enjoy the Thanksgiving. So I hope you all enjoy the Thanksgiving holiday and then we'll be back on the sixth to talk about several of the things you talked about tonight along with a lot more. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for city manager? All right. Council, have any new items for discussion? I just wanted to mention that we had talked about porta-potties, maybe downtown, or maybe to prevent some of the using the streets for the bathrooms. And I called about three companies today and I got a no, a no, and yeah, we'll do it. Hundred bucks for a porta potty, twenty-five dollars for insurance. That's weekly cleaning.
Some of the information, too.
And then I, I said, well, what if we wanted to clean twice a week? That would be another twenty-five dollars. So you got a hundred fifty dollars and that includes insurance because, you know, they want to, when it gets short, they want to replace them.
Sure.
So I will tell you who that was later. All right. Any other new items for discussion? All right, this meeting is adjourned at six, six PM.